So we will call to order our regular session board meeting. It is Monday, August 11th. Thank you to everyone who's joining us, both in person and virtually. I would like to, we're a little bit late, sorry about that. We had a work session prior, but we'd like to ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it spans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll just jump right in so we can get ourselves back on track. Our first agenda item is our recognition and good news about Oregon City Schools, and we're going to hear from Dr. Crane about summer programs to students.
You're going to hear a whole lot from other people, but I'm so excited to introduce these four wonderful people who are going to come up and sit together. They each have a portion of the presentation. Could not be more impressed with what they pulled off this summer for our kids. April 23rd, we were notified that we had a million dollars to spend on summer school for our kids, and we did it. And they did it. So they're going to talk about different portions that happened, and again, just, I can't wait for you to see all their awesome pictures and hear all the awesome stuff that happened.
And I think on that note, we'll just start with a thank you, because it started with a team writing the grant. It started with Human Resources helping us hire staff and fiscal processing all of the budget, technology, making sure we had the things we needed. Like, it took the entire district coming together to pull it off. We just happen to be the four that get to report out on the great work. So it's been a huge team effort, which is one of the things that inspires me about summer. So this is just kind of an overview of, there were so many different access points for families this summer, and I think that's one of the things that really excites me about what we've been doing in Oregon City is there's a variety of ways that families can continue to, well, we can continue to engage with families. And so whether that be family field trips, or parks, books in the park, or summer school itself, we had a lot of different offerings, and we interacted with a lot of community members this summer.
All right. My name is Jen Weaver, and I was the secondary summer school administrator. So I'd love to talk to you for just a couple of minutes about what we did at Tom Wadoff, our secondary summer school program today. We ran from June 23rd to July 11th. It was 14 quick days. We called it summer pathways, as we were just on a quick summer journey during that time. Click. We had grades five through 10. So these were students who had just finished fifth grade, so they're rising sixth graders coming into middle school, all the way through ninth and 10th grade for summer, for recovery credits, high school recovery credits. I think all of our schools in the district were represented while they were here. 14 days, 32 staff, mostly full-time, just a couple of part-time people, and roughly 170 students during that time. So we called it summer pathways, because we had three paths to summer success. We had our fifth graders, who were doing an avid summer bridge program. Sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, who were doing a more traditional look to summer school, academics in the morning and elective style in the afternoon. And then our ninth and 10th graders, certain ninth and 10th graders that were there doing in-person recovery credits with us for math and language arts, ELA. So in the morning, it was actually three blocks of academics, a reading block, a writing block, and a math block. But then in the afternoon, students got to choose, for the most part, their pathway to go through for those 14 days. It was elective style, with some literacy built into it. Fifth graders, actually, theirs was like, sort of set up like a mock outdoor school to kind of get them ready for outdoor school this coming year, with a lot of community building and things like that. And then ninth and 10th graders, their pathways in the afternoon looked a little bit different, because it was more focused on college and career readiness and things like that. And then, these are just some pictures of our eighth graders went to Hopkins Demonstration Forest, got to do some cool things. Our fifth and sixth graders, we just, we missed an opportunity to get out of the building, so we brought people in, and we brought in the Reptile Man one afternoon, huge hit. Same with us too. Our fifth and sixth graders got to have an experience at, in the building with the Tuolton River. They came and did a presentation, ecosystems. And then our ninth and 10th graders were able to get a couple of times, they went and visited the Northwest College of Construction and also Clark College in Vancouver, which was great.
Elementary. Angela Pollak, I was elementary principal for our program that we ran at a Gardner. So we called it summer explorations, and we had just over, next slide, I think I'm getting ahead of myself. It was a six-week program, and we had first through fifth graders there. We had just over 235 students to start, so it was, students from all five of our elementary buildings were there in attendance. We had 49 full and part-time staff members as well. So we were really busy, and Gardner also hosts the free breakfast and lunch, so they were able to take advantage of those services too. This is kind of what our daily schedule looked like for summer exploration program. All the teachers had these slides available to them, so Teaching and Learning really did all this background work for them, and had all these slides ready for the teachers. So really, they just had to go in, and they had the slideshow available to them, and they can go through. The morning was kind of set up like secondary, it was more academics. We had a reading block, writing block, some math, and some small group reading as well. And then the afternoon was spent more on, like thematic type units. So we'll get to that next. We'll see some pictures. Oh, yep. So we called the classroom exploration. So you can see, this is kind of what our classrooms, our classrooms were small, so it was really nice to take advantage of that learning time for these kids to fill any holes they may have had throughout the school year. And then we used Ufly a lot during that time, and as well as some math pieces from our math program. Right here, oh, yep, you can go on now, sorry. Now I know how my students feel when I get ahead of them. This is part of our afternoon. Our afternoon existed of some science, art, some engineering, some building. It just depended on what our theme was, because we themed every week, and every week kind of played to what it looked like at the end of the day. So each one of our units, it looked a little different each week. So the kids really enjoyed that. This was probably, Gardner has a wonderful playground, so if you haven't been there, it, these kids absolutely loved it. Last year, ping pong was big, but this year, it's all about soccer field. So we could barely peel them off of the soccer. They had a great time playing soccer. We, it was just a really good, really good time to go out and be able to explore with them even during recess time, because you could see how much fun they were having. So it was really great. This was new, we, I ran, I helped run the program last year too, so this was something new, which is fantastic. We had tutors that were actually in the building, and they were pulling small groups of kids. And I think, yeah, Brooklyn ran most of this. So she had a schedule where she was meeting kids every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, and they were meeting sometimes one-on-one. So they were getting advantage of all these small group time. She had five reading tutors. They serviced 130 students during this time. Each session was about 15. Each session was about 15 minutes, and they were pre-teaching what they'd be learning in class. So it was a really good way to help these kids have a foundation. So.
Kindergarten camp?
Kindergarten camp. I failed to introduce myself, I'm Candace Hinkin, and I get to be the K-12 literacy specialist. At kindergarten camp, we were able to offer two sessions of kindergarten camp at Janine's Lodge with our preschool partners there, and so we had 40 students that took advantage of that. They had like a two-week experience, where they got to learn about sharing and some pre-academic skills as well. So we were really glad to partner with our Janine's Lodge staff to be able to accomplish that.
So it's two-week session, so we did have more than...
Yes, so we did two weeks, and then we took a one-week break, and then we did another two-week session. So we were able to do 40 students total in that, and that's because the grant requirements for kindergarten are a little bit different than they are for already-school-aged kiddos.
Can you hear me okay? I'm Erin Willis, I'm the Associate Director of Student Services. I'm here, but I wish, there are countless other staff I wish could be here that we could all celebrate. I just happen to be the one that gets to present. So Extended School Year, ESY, one of our charges as a school district is to identify students who receive special education services who may struggle to maintain some of their skills following longer breaks, particularly summer. So, you know, we, our teams work to identify those students, and let them know we have a summer program called Extended School Year, or ESY, where we work to maintain those skills. So when they come back to us in September, they're ready to learn and not have to relearn all the stuff that maybe they were working on last spring. And it is highly individualized, we build their plans based off their IEPs, and those areas that we know that they may struggle to regain or recoup some of those skills. And we had, I think we had about 40 students that were eligible this year for ESY, and we had closer to 30 that attended, so we were excited about our turnout this year. And as we have for the past, I mean, at least five or six years, we've been really happy to partner with the other summer programs going, and so we had a number of students that did ESY in the morning, and then joined one of the other summer programs happening in the afternoon, so making sure that they were able to come to us for some more of that academic stuff, and then as was kind of shared, some of more of that enrichment stuff that they did in the afternoons, they got to participate in. So that was very cool. We had staff, I think we had four or five licensed teachers, and plenty of instructional assistants that all knew many of the students that attended, so there was a lot of familiar faces for our students who certainly, you know, appreciate the predictability and the familiarity that we were able to provide. And as you can see, I think on this slide and the next slide as well, we did a ton of project-based learning that all incorporated many of, again, the IEP goals, and I think some of those pictures there, there was a photo booth on the last, the last day, or it was beach day, so you can see some of the kids decked out. I mean, who needs Hawaii when you can have beach day over at Gardner Middle School? Yeah, and so it was, as always, it's an absolute pleasure for us to have to do ESY, and I think the smiling faces also echo that.
All right, and then we'll round it out with a little bit of family programming that we were able to offer. We did, we were able to hire at-home reading coordinators who really focused on K-2 literacy through the Early Literacy Grant, and they, was an instructional assistant and a classroom teacher who paired together and said, how can we continue to engage families? And so they came up with their own bingo board, which is similar to what the library does, except for kids, as they finished it, they got books mailed home to them, or they came to the park and picked up their books. And my favorite is coming into my mailbox and having an envelope written by a child with their bingo card in it, it's like, they were learning to address an envelope and reading books, double win. And so they had sessions at the parks, at Wesley Lynn Park on Tuesday mornings, and then Thursday evenings, and had a pretty consistent turnout of about 25 families every time that would show up and do activities. They also brought in some guest readers as well. So fun. So this is some of the pictures from Books in the Park. The other thing that we did was Family Field Trip Fridays, and so this coincided with the Summer Exploration, so we went Monday through Thursday, but Friday was Family Field Trip Day, and it was open to most of our students in the district. So it was funded through Title I, so unfortunately, John McLaughlin wasn't able to participate, but all the other schools, families were able to sign up, they were able to take a bus, and lunch was provided. We had families that rode the bus, we had families that decided to transport themselves and be there, their admission was covered, and so every school went to these same field trips, but on different days, so we didn't overwhelm any one place. The zoo was a big hit, Omsi was a big hit, but we got to go to some other places that families may not necessarily go to also, which was the Oregon Garden, Philip Foster Farm, and Gilbert House. And I would say, with all of these things, we had reports of families just being so grateful to have these different opportunities, whether it was summer school, or family field trips, or ESY, any of those things. I know there's lots of stories of like tears and joy, joyful tears, of we can't believe that this is free and available to us, and we're making memories. So some statistics about those, of how many kids went, and bus riders, 346 people rode the school bus to go to these field trips, like, so cool. Lunch is provided, all of that wonderful things. And then the last part is, we've got kids and we have teachers, so why not do some adult learning? So we continued on our learning labs this year, and that means that we invited our staff in to learn from the summer school staff, learn about upcoming, promising practices, and we had several sessions that were offered, and many staff that attended, some of them just attended once, some of them attended multiples of them. What I really appreciated is that staff were really thoughtful about what they signed up for, and some of them were signing up the day before. So you thought, oh, I only have two people, and then 10 people showed up, because they wanted to really make sure that it was a commitment they were going to be able to do, and they were enjoying their summers also. So we covered a lot of topics from ELA to coaching to math, and it was, a lot was covered. Thank you to everyone, especially all of our community partners, but then also, like, our district staff who made this happen, grounds, and like, every single person worked hard to make it happen. And then thank you to families for trusting us with the care of your children during the summer, and doing some like fun and wild things.
Questions from the board?
I'm short tonight, I got, my chair's not right. I just wanted to reiterate that. I mean, this is such a huge commitment over your spring, or summer vacation, and so to thank every staff member that stepped up and said, I'm going to do this for our students, and give them a little bit of success to carry them and build for coming back to school in a few weeks. But my question too, is what is the Gilbert House?
Gilbert House? It is in Salem, and I would say it's similar to the, what used to be the Children's Museum, like that kind of interactive. It's definitely geared towards more of that K-3 student, so older kids went and they found things to do also that were fun. But it was really, it's more of like an interactive museum that you can go to there, with lots of like hands-on thing, pretty cool play structure.
Candace, I think for every field trip, you also had some supplies and swag bags, you called them, for, about learning, right?
Yes, yeah, I, sorry, forgot to mention that. So every field trip, we had a family swag bag, a little cinch bag with a book that went along with the field trip, some activities they could do, some of them were like building little planes out of like cardboard things, and so something to connect with the field trip, so that it didn't end at the field trip, that they continued on having those conversations and engaging in literacy.
I was just, you beat me to it, I was going to say, if you haven't been to Gilbert House, you should go, because if you have any kind of child that you want to take to have an excuse to take them there, my grandchildren, two of my grandchildren live in Salem, and we, for their birthdays are a month apart, so we bought a family pass, and so we go with them quite often. We included ourselves in that family pass, and it's so much fun, and it just has so, different kids can do different things. We spend most of our time in the art room when we go, but it's amazing, and it reminded me, because we were regular attenders when my children were young, of the Children Museum in Portland, and that's when it was in a brick building in southeast, and this Gilbert House is just charming and exciting. And then that you went to Philip Foster also is really cool. So thank you for giving kids this opportunity from Omsi, which is downtown, you know, right in Portland, to someplace like the Gilbert House, or the farm, where it's a really different opportunity, all hands-on, but still really allows kids to see different parts of the world, and I think helping kids see that is amazing. And I was surprised, having my kids grow up in Camby, I was surprised at how many kids didn't get out of that small, and I'm sure, because it's expensive, and so just the vision for that is so cool, I didn't know it was happening. So thank you for that vision, and thank you to all the staff. I agree with Michelle, who spent their summers being with kids. It makes me happy to see.
Us too. And there will be funding then for summer programming next year?
That's a great question. We hope to know in October.
Yeah.
And not April 23rd, although, sure, we'll take it April 23rd, but we're really hopeful that we'll know in October, and these wonderful people are going to help with us knowing what worked, what didn't work, what we could change a little bit, and pull it off again if we get the funds.
And that, yeah, that was my second part of the question, what did you find really worked well this year and would want to keep, and, you know, what maybe you would change in the future? So it's just kind of a broad questioning, curiosity.
I'm sure we all have something, I don't want to... I'll start with the secondary program, I think, what worked well is, I think, staffing for me worked out really well. I feel lucky to have gotten the, been able to hire the teachers and staff that I was able to hire. I feel like even with sort of late notice on getting the money and things like that, and then putting out the ads for it and things like that, that I got real lucky with who we were able to bring in and be with the kids. So real strong crew, and there was almost, almost, almost no staff absent, and they were able to be there the whole 14 days, so I feel fortunate for that, and many other things. Something I changed next year is thinking a little bit more about the enrichment part of it. You know, we did what we could last minute with the pathways in the afternoon, things like that, but not every grade was able to go on a field trip. We were going through Fridays, I don't know when the Family Fun Fridays began, but, you know, so not every grade was able to go on a field trip, so we had to bring people in kind of last minute, but, you know, we worked with what we had, but it would be cool to have some sort of different enrichment things, and think that through more.
I was a part of it last year too, so I think each year you come away and you, there's a little bit, something else you can move and shift and make this improve, and I think that's what we always do. But, I mean, the core people that I had around me were amazing, fantastic people to work with, and I was really blessed. And just seeing the kids come every day, and you knew them all by name, and, well, it felt like it. And a lot of them had come up to me and be like, you're at Redland! So it was really fun to have that still community with the kids, and be able to pop in the rooms, and just, I think we have the academic part down, it seemed to be really solid and really good, what we were offering to the kids. I feel like that was a really good piece, Candace can speak more to that as well, but for me, if I had to change something, it would probably be the length of their day, because they, they kind of, kind of were checking out on us in the afternoons, it's longer than their regular school day. So they struggled in that afternoon time, so that would probably be, and I'm jealous of no absences.
And that was, the reason the day was longer was because of the requirements of the grant. It had to be based on literacy, it had to be 80 hours, and there were all these rules that were, okay, let's extend it a little bit, let's do, you know, and then wanting to do Friday something different, so there were a lot of rules that we found our way to, and you all did a great job. Jen and Angela both, at some point in the spring, told me flat-out, straight, face-to-face, I'm actually going to take the summer off this year. And here they are, and Angela got 24 hours' notice, so, and showed up, I mean, showed up. So the fact that, I mean, Erin and Candace were going to work anyway, but these two in the middle, no, I just can't echo enough how thankful I am that people showed up for kids, because that, if we couldn't find the people, we wouldn't have had programming, no matter how much money you get, if there's no one to give it to.
We're so grateful for you guys. Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, Ryan.
Brian?
Ryan, have anything?
No, I was talking about my...
I just asked Ryan.
Oh.
I have a question, did we spend all the grant money? Were we able to spend?
We're pretty sure we're going to get there. Mm-hmm. Things are still coming in, receipts are still coming in, but the plan that we submitted was the full amount, because at the beginning, you had to say if you were going to use it all, because if not, they were taking little chunks from people and giving it to other people even later. So we were, we wanted to be diligent about spending it all, one for our kids, but also so that we didn't leave money on the table that could have gone to someone else. So we believe that we have done it. We also didn't include in the slideshow, something that Jen didn't speak, she did speak to, but the credits, 34 half-credits were earned at Tom Wada during those 14 days, through in-person, you know, face-to-face credits. And, you know, their ninth and 10th graders going to a middle school, showing up every day, and that's asking a lot, and they did it. And then at our OCHS credit recovery, we had, sorry, 135 half-credits earned. So a lot of good work happened, some of it would have happened without the money, because it's stuff we've done every year, but a whole lot of it, and so much of what they all did, happened because of the extra money from the state, so we're grateful.
Are we going to be tracking any data with these kiddos, to see when they, like, you mentioned learning loss from some of the kids, that there was 30 kids participated, there was 40 that could have, maybe to talk their parents into getting, I know everybody has a summer, but it's like, hey, this really helped this percent of kids come in our program, and I think data is a big motivator and stuff.
It's like you were paying attention to the last session we had too, right? Being data-driven boards, nice job. That was a requirement of the grant, right? Both of well-being, they had to do surveys, and of literacy data. So we absolutely tracked at the beginning, tracked how far they came over the summer, and then when we come into map testing in the fall, we'll be pulling specific kids who went, so that we know, yeah, and it goes along with like, what could we do differently next year, what was effective, what wasn't.
Good question. Kim?
Yeah, one more. Did you utilize volunteers at all? Or were you able, I mean, it was last minute, so would that be something you think that would be helpful in another year, or not? I mean, when it's that quick, sometimes unless they're experienced volunteers, it might not be, but...
I think volunteers are always helpful.
Okay.
And, you know, it was not something that we utilized, I think, because so much of coming together for summer is like, you're building a brand-new community. And so you lose some of that connection that you have outside of that community, but it's definitely, more hands make life work.
Absolutely. So I'm guessing then, with the number of teachers you've had, that they weren't all from our district?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, thank you so much for joining us. We're so grateful for the programming that you offered our students. It's aligned with our strategic plan, it's aligned with the culture that we want to set, so we're really proud of the work that you did, and thankful for everything that you contributed to the district this summer, and we're really excited for school to kick off this fall.
You too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent's report.
All right, I'm limiting myself to a few things, and I will say, because Candace didn't say it, but Oregon Department of Education came and did a walkabout, and was sincerely impressed with the programming and the efforts, and specifically, the challenge of having staff that were coming from outside of our district, but having everything prepared so that you could get the training, move, go, was just paramount to the success of the program. So rumor had it that later that afternoon, in a summer school meeting, there was a shout-out to Oregon City, so thank you Candace for your leadership, and everyone for contributing. I want to hit just on a few things, so as you know, there has been, the governor signed an expectation or a ban on cell phones during the instructional time for next year. We already do that, already at our middle schools, and in our high schools, it's been often away during class, but they've had it in the hallways and lunch. So there will be... So, there will be some changes and some tweaks. There will be a policy coming that will come in front of the board in September that needs to be approved in October, hopefully. And we have to have it in place in January. In terms of working with staff and students, January is a really bad time because we're already in patterns. So, we're going to, we're going to hit it as we go into school in September. And the administrative team, in collaboration with Dr. Crane, are going to be working on kind of those guidelines, the information to students, information to staff, information to parents. So, we started some of that work already. We have another meeting this week. We might have got a draft, draft of a policy through some back channels. So, we kind of know what it looks like, which will help us. And that's what we're guiding our practices and expectations around. So, that will be coming to you soon. The other thing, just to highlight, AI has been kind of a conversation that we've had. You know, last year, we had Think Tank, our AI Think Tank. And a lot of early adopters come and try to play with AI and how they could bring it into the classroom and what have you. Some of them will be presenting in our Empowered Educator Conference next Monday, which is exciting. But this fall, every staff member will have some, like, an introduction, a little bit of training. Gemini, kind of the basic edition, is available to everyone now through our platform here with Google. So, every single staff member, whether they're elementary, middle, and high school, will get a little introduction. And we're hoping to mine the wisdom of staff as they continue to use it, as we continue to work with our Think Tank and other training through our technology integration facilitators and other teacher leaders as we dive into that. This week and the week before, we welcomed our supervisors, our principals and supervisors back to fall. And we started a lot of professional development. We have done professional development on safety. We had a whole safety day. We've done PD on our five Ds, because we're bringing on the next level of components for that. We've done training, we're going to do training in math and reading, language arts, behavior, and a lot of collaboration today. We worked on evaluations and HR protocols, because we want to stay up with best practices and legal mandates. And they've just, it's been great. It's a great vibe. They're really happy to be back, for the most part, although it's 100 degrees, we had to change our location. But it's going really well. And next Monday, we have our Empowered Educator Conference, where it's our teachers and staff teaching our teachers and staff. So, everybody's welcome to come to that. It's optional, but we do have funding this year to pay for it out of our residual Title II. So, we're excited about that opportunity. I'd like to remind anybody who might be listening to enroll your students. We looked at our numbers today, and again, we just opened last week. So, we look as predicted at this point, which is good. But if we have more community members, new friends coming, we'd like to know about them so we can appropriately plan. So, please enroll. And then finally, just an invitation to the board. On Wednesday, the 27th, at Oregon City High School, we have our district-wide kickoff for the year with all of our staff. That will start at 9:15. We will be welcomed and encouraged by our cheer team and our band. It's just a great time. So, we are giving out awards this year, as you probably recall, related to our strategic plan. We have five areas and have identified two areas in each of those that we want to recognize staff. We have amazing staff, and we need to do more celebrations. So, we're excited to launch that this year. So, invite you all to come. The kickoff will be about an hour, and we'd love to see you.
That's fantastic. Any questions from the board for Dr. Spitzer?
Just in the information that got shared at the OSBA, the important piece was the students with the cellphone policies, really involving them, helping them understand. So, just a question on what the thoughts are around getting the buy-in from students.
Yeah, great question. And also, it's every personal device, right? So, it's important to note, yep, exactly, watches included. So, what we know is that most of our schools are doing something similar already. So, that's helpful. What we heard this weekend and what a team is working on is really just making sure they understand the why. Whether they agree with the why or not is okay. But they deserve to know why we would not want you to have your cellphone during your instruction time. And of course, at OCHS, the difference is you can't have it in passing periods or lunch, but you already couldn't have it in class. And at our middle schools, it was already bell-to-bell. So, that's great. And then the elementary schools will follow suit. But what we're doing is providing teachers some actual slideshows that just say, like, these are the whys, this is the research, this is what we're, and those will be like a K-2, a 3.5, a 7.8, yeah, 6.8, high school, etc., just so that they understand the reasoning. And then, you know, happy to, and then have some time to discuss. Happy to hear their thoughts. I can tell you, having done some of those before, you know, it's like, just, can you bring it back? Can we have them back? Because that's sort of how the discussion goes. So, it's like, no, but, you know, what could you do instead to get your music? Oh, look, you have a computer, you know, things like that. And we've talked about, there's some little details of, like, if you forget your Chromebook, it's no longer going to be an option to pull it up on your phone, whether you were doing that or not. But just some, so making sure we have the infrastructure also to make sure that kids have what they need and can access their curriculum.
Yeah, one of the things that, I just wanted to make clear, or make sure that we, as a board, understand is it's bell-to-bell, which is not, that's what the, what the government, and there's real specific things in the policy. So, I have, I think you, did you pick it up too? Some information that I'd be glad to scan and send to you guys that just gives, so that we can be ready to know what it is, or is expected of us. And they will, they, and our staff will make sure that we are aware of that too. But it was a one-page, and it was really nice, so.
And I think it's a little bit confusing, because we had a slogan last year that was "Bell-to-bell, there is no cell." That was beginning of period to end of period. But this is actually beginning of day to end of school day.
Yeah.
And so, that is a big change for our students at the high school level.
Well, we'd be pointing this out to the student, especially the high school students, that their governor voted, put this in and not, you know, we might have been happy with our local control and our rules, but this was mandated by the state.
I appreciate that feedback. And we could definitely put something like that in the slideshow. Why would the governor do this? Because, right, so that it's not like, I don't know, the governor, I mean, the governor issued an executive order for all schools in all of Oregon, all levels, and here is why, this is what the research says about having your phone. It's a good idea.
And I was going to say this in my, my little sharing from my, when we get to the end of the meeting. But I also think it would be a great opportunity for us as a, as a board also to back this next step in a way that might be, in a way, and I asked Sarah, what can we do? How can we support this so that our voices are saying, we really support this because, you know, the data shows that, 1, 2, 3, 4. So, anyway, so I actually hope to approach you guys, when I find out from Sarah, what, just how we can very visibly back what's going to happen.
And I think the other piece that I forgot to speak to that's super, super important is our family information.
Yes.
That we have as well, right? So, we'll have slideshows for the students and the staff, but also the families, so that they know the what, but they also know the why. Because some of them will be worried, how am I going to get ahold of my child off his phone? You know, just some of those old things that we used to do, but we are now really in the habit of not doing it. So, it's going to be important to help families as well.
Thank you.
A quick question. Because I haven't seen the policy, nor have anybody else. But if we are bell-to-bell, we still have open campus for lunch for our juniors and seniors? So, if they leave campus, they get to have their phones?
It's a great question that we need to dig into, but I cannot follow them in their car.
Right.
So, as long as we have open campus, I can't really.
I'm just seeing this mad rush.
No, yeah, it's a really good point, and it could change our lunch numbers and, yeah.
And actually, that, there was a lot of discussion. I went to one full thing, as well as, they talked about it in the Hot Topics. And that was, everyone was saying, what about this? Especially when you think about free lunches and that, you know, if students are so. So, it really is, to me, it's about a culture change. You know, I think about how I raised my kids or how I was raised, you know? My parents called the office if they needed to get ahold of me. I realize there are a lot of other fears around that. But one of the things that got talked about was just this idea that there are people who've already started it, that they actually are seeing kids talk to each other in a way that they hadn't been before, right? It's not, there's actually noise in the cafeteria at lunch instead of everybody. So, again, if we can, as a board, say this, yes, the governor said this, but we also are, you know, here's the data about why this is important for you as a student and important for our culture as a school. So, that's my thoughts on it.
It is an important question also, because we don't want kids to not have lunch, because they've left campus so that they can be on their phone. Yeah, so it's something we'll be talking about for sure.
Well, because it's an addiction for them too. And so, I mean, addiction's still a hard thing to reprogram and go through, so.
Ryan, did you have anything to add?
Is there any additional support we need to do at the schools? I don't know if there are extra calls to offices, different prompts we need to do, or any of that kind of thought?
You mean, because more parents will be calling the office?
Affirmative, correct.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, again, it's something that we need to talk through. My guess is that it will be at first, and then it will die down. But, yeah, we certainly need to be ready for that and know how we're going to make sure the office is always covered and that messages are getting, are given to students, and there's a method for that. And maybe some things, particularly at the older grades, that we haven't had to worry about for a while. And it's high school. I mean, middle school's already doing it. Jen could speak to it. It's, and actually, we asked Ben the other day, the principal at Tamwata, if it had changed a lot, and Rebecca, actually. We said, you know, did the office volume, call volume, go up in a way that you couldn't manage it? And they said, yes, at first, and then, no. So, I think it's partly like, to Pamela's point, the culture shift of not being able to get my answer right now from my kid or tell my kid this thing right now. I am guilty of that. So, I also need to work on, but I mean, I think that's it, right? It's like, they don't need to know that right now. You don't need to give them a message about the grocery list, right? So, the calls died down after not very long.
Fantastic, thank you. I don't think there's any other questions from the board. Is there any patron input tonight?
There is not. No patron input for you.
Thank you. We can move on to reports and discussion. First up is back-to-school information and offerings. It's Dr. Crane.
Molly Martinez is going to come. She is our supervisor at OCC-E. And super excited to have her tell us about the things happening in the community and the things happening at Jennings Lodge. And then I'm going to finish us up with just talking about peak, no, I keep saying that, K-12 school events.
Awesome.
Yes, good evening, everyone. As Sarah mentioned, I'm Molly Martinez. I am the supervisor for Oregon City Community Education Department. So, just a little bit of background, Community Education Department, we serve all of the surrounding communities, so not necessarily just members of Oregon City School District, but the community as a whole. So, we offer a range of programs and services within our department. And I'm going to share a little bit of each of those programs. So, just to start, some of our exciting upcoming opportunities. At the end of this month, we have our Back-to-School Resource Fair that we're holding on August 28th. That's a Thursday night from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. It's going to be at Jennings Lodge campus. And that is open to anybody in the community. Once again, we're going to have a lot of different resource providers, vendor tables set up for families to learn about different local services and resource providers. We're going to have free food, school supplies. We're partnering with the public library. They're going to have library books for the kiddos, as well as just some fun activities. Our similar event that we held last year at Jennings Lodge had over 350 families that we served. We also have a ceramics class. It's going to be an eight-week course that's starting September 25th until November 13th. And that's going to be held at Tamwata Middle School by our very own Tamwata art teacher, James Martin. So, that's an exciting upcoming community ed class. Once again, open to anybody in the community. Looking back at this past summer, we just wrapped up our summer yoga class series that we held at Gardner Middle School. That class had about 20 participants, on average, that attended each session of the six-week series. We also just wrapped up another class that we partnered with Nami Clachemis to offer. And it was a workshop for parents, conducted in Spanish, that focuses on mental health, specific to the Latinx community, using a cultural lens through the instruction. And that one also had about 20 participants that consistently attended each session as well. One of our other programs under community ed is our youth sports program. We just opened up our registration for fall coed volleyball, and that's for grades three through eight. Once again, that's open to anybody in the community. So, we have a lot of homeschool families, charter school families, and out-of-district families that also participate in our programs. Looking back at last year's enrollment, we have our enrollment numbers up there. Consistently, it was, on average, over 100 participants every season last year, totaling about 871 participants over the full 2024, 2025 school year. So, just keep in mind, a lot of these participants did participate in multiple sports over the years. So, some of those numbers might be duplicated, but we had a great turnout for the last year. One of our other programs is our After-the-Bell program. So, that is our after-school childcare program at all six of our elementary schools, serving a total of about 270 students across the six schools. We are a license-exempt childcare provider, meaning that while we're not required to be licensed by the state of Oregon, we do follow all of the health, safety, and training for all of our employees under our programming. So, all of our staff are trained in infant, child, and adult first aid, CPR, and AED, amongst other trainings that are required by the state of Oregon. And we're listed with the Central Background Registry. So, we just opened up our lottery-style enrollment to ensure equitable access to this program this last year, so that all district families have the opportunity to join the program. And then we have different enrichment club activities. This last year, we partnered with Coding With Kids, as well as Kids Like Languages, to offer some different STEM classes and some language classes to our participants in the program at no extra cost to the families. And last, we have our Early Learning Center preschool. So, that is our preschool program that is held at Jennings Lodge. We serve around 54 students that are age three through five years old. And they're in mixed-group classrooms, which is a new addition to the program this coming year. Once again, we're a license-exempt childcare program for the preschool as well. So, we meet all of the Department of Early Learning and Care Standards and Requirements for the program. We utilize district-approved curriculums, the world of wonders, so that it's aligned with kinder readiness to integrate all of our students into the school system. Most of our four-year-olds end up enrolling in kindergarten within this district. We offer a lot of non-school-day camps. We are finishing up our last two weeks of our summer kindergarten program, or, not, sorry, our preschool program, which also had the kinder camp that Candace mentioned earlier. So, on average, we've had about 20 preschoolers per week over this last summer. But then, when we had the kinder camp as well, we had about 40 students enrolled in that program.
All right, thank you. And you'll have time to ask our questions, but we want to make sure we talked about the K-12. Of course, after the bell and some of the other things are K-12, but the schools. Go to the next slide, please, thank you. So, at elementary, I wanted to make sure you know that on 9/23, September 23, every elementary school is having a back-to-school night. And this is our, our theory of action here is that if we give this in the third week of school about, school about teachers will know their kids, their classrooms will be set up, and they'll have the bandwidth to really explain what happens in fourth grade? What are we learning in second grade? You know, and making sure that parents, you know, we heard from the surveys last year that parents really wanted to know academically what students do in each grade and how they're learning, and so that we really want to do that. And we thought having it on the same night is a fun way to make sure everybody gets the information. In addition to that, the six schools are all having a slightly different supply drop-off kind of situation. Some are doing popsicles, some are doing ice cream, but you can still drop off your supplies the first week during in-service, and you can still go to the classroom on the first day of drop-off. But during the week, we're going to let the teachers get their classrooms set up and ready to go, and then they will be totally ready to share great information with you on the 23rd. To know what is happening at your individual school, just watch Parent Square. Those announcements will come out on Parent Square. Middle schools have a variety of things. Registration is on the 20th of August. They get their schedules on the first day of school. And there's a beginning band night on 8/26 for people who want to decide which instrument they want to play. Gardner is having an open house on September 11th, and families can drop in then and meet staff and tour the building. Families can check schedules the last week of August in Parent View. I will say, people always want their schedules earlier than they can get them, and it is a well-oiled machine, and it needs to be totally set before you hit that button that makes them live. So be patient with us so that we get it right. And then, first day of school is September 2nd. So I'm just seeing what else they, the principals all gave me notes of things to say. And then our high schools will be, Case has August 27th and 28th an afternoon open house and registration, and then they will have a back-to-school night in September. OXLA will have, basically, making appointments with them to register and come see, meet with Sarah is the way to go, Sarah Craig, the principal there. And then OCHS's schedules will be ready during in-service week, so that starts the 25th of August. New students are forecasting August 19th from 8:00 to 3:30. It's drop-in. And then I put a video up here that is the Places to Know video, that's really for all students who want to, and families who just kind of want to see, like, what is the high school all about? It's, to me, you heard earlier, I graduated from a very small school, so our high school is huge to me. And if your child feels like that, or if you feel like that as a parent, you can just watch the video, it's very nice, and then you can, of course, go see it as well. On the first day of school at OCHS, it will be new students only. That's ninth graders and any other new students. And then the Link Crew runs a bunch of cool events for them. If you have any questions on the schedule, talk to your child's counselor. You can reach out to them via email or call. And then, on the website, we will have, it's either live right now or it'll be live tomorrow. And that is all information about the change to semester schedule. Okay. Now we'll answer any of your questions.
Questions from the board?
Is there any chance that we could get a list of, like, open houses or registration, whatever, just in case we can?
Absolutely.
And then, of course, let you know that we're coming.
Yeah, yeah, happy to do that.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for all the work that you do. That's a lot of stuff going on all the time.
Thank you.
Just a little bit around, like, the funding or how to keep costs low? What does it look like for students to take part in some of those different programs to ensure that everybody has access?
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we definitely are open to exploring plenty of different opportunities. So we do partner with Building Blocks for Kids, for example, and that provides scholarships for anybody. There's no eligibility determination. Anybody can apply for a scholarship to participate in enrichment or sports programming. So we always refer families to Building Blocks. Also, just partnering with different nonprofits, such as that last class that I mentioned, where we partnered with NAMI Clacamas, they were able to offer that class for free. So a lot of different nonprofits and community partners are able to work with us to be able to provide either low-cost or free classes.
That's great. And then some things that you have planned? Are there some expansions in any of the offerings? Just curious.
Yeah, I'm definitely exploring plenty of different opportunities to offer a range of different classes and build up that community ed piece. Our youth sports, our preschool, and our After the Bell program have kind of been these huge, you know, cornerstones of community ed, but I'm really excited to build more on the community ed classes that are open to, you know, folks from all walks of life, rather than just focusing on students. I really want to open that up to the community as a whole as well.
Great.
Thank you. We really appreciate it. I know our family benefits from all of these programs and we're grateful for them, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Up next, English Learners Annual Report with Dr. Crane and Kelly Gavitch.
The great thing is, last year, I gave this report, it was one of my first reports, and I was still, not that I, I'm not still like this, but I was like, oh, I'm giving a report to the board, okay, really? Should I do that? So this year, I have a partner who can do this report, and this is Kelly Gavitch, and she is our EL DLI TOSA, which is English Learner's Dual Language Instruction TOSA. She has worked so hard on so many things this year, and this is a requirement from the state to give you this, board, remember, it is a weird one because it's a year past. But we'll get to the part where you can hear about things that we're doing now as well.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. I am Kelly Gavitch. I get to be the bilingual programs, TOSA, and all things multilingual are my specialty and passion. I was talking with Dr. Crane about this report when she asked me to pull some of the information, and I was like, are you sure this is the right year? And she's like, yes, it is. So compared to what you've seen this evening, this is a little dry, so I'm just going to prepare you. So some terminology and definitions for you that you're going to hear about. Our current English learners are students who qualify for English Language Development Services in our district. Former English learners are any students who have demonstrated proficiency and have exited from the program. That might be students who are still being monitored or have exited that monitoring window as well. And then, our ever English learners are students who have ever qualified for English Language Development Services ever in their time in our schools. And so we just like to keep track of how they're doing. And then the final group are never English learners, and they are students who may have been screened and did not qualify, or were never considered for needing English Language Development Services. Next slide, please. So here we are for our 23-24 school year numbers. These are percentages compared to the state. I have some numbers for you. So we had 481 students that counted as current English learners during that school year. 268 students were former English learners. And that means, if you do the math, 749 students were ever English learners. That means the current and former combined. Our never English learners that year were 6,384 students. So you can see the percentages and how we compare to the state. Okay, thanks. We did have some confusion in pulling this data, so it is possible. Okay. The next slide shows the percentage of students who qualify for both English Language Development Services and Special Education Services. We call them dual-identified. And so in Oregon City, we have 24% of students who qualify for EL and SPED compared to 16% of students who qualify for Special Education only.
Next, on this.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, for clarity, in the last slide, is it possible to go back?
Yes.
Not this one?
This one?
That one. So anybody who is a part of EL, am I getting it backwards? Is also a part of, considered part of Special Education?
No.
No, it's the other way around. Okay. Some kids.
Some kids can be either.
And some.
And some kids can be both, right? And so this green bar on the graph is showing you students that qualify for both EL services and Special Education Services compared to students who only qualify for Special Education.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes, thank you for asking. That was a really good question.
If you want to go back to the last slide.
Yes.
State number is equaling 118%, which is the problem, right?
Oh, the state?
That's actually not possible.
Okay.
So we'll, I'll go back and look at our data. The OCSD numbers are equaling 100.
Well, are they? Because I thought that current English learners and former English learners added up to ever English learners. Did I do that?
So that's just around, oh, I see what you're saying. So it's 90% instead of?
It's 91%, yeah. Because I'm guessing that it's like 6.4 and 3.6 or something.
Oh, well, that explains, so the statewide's right and we're wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Thank you.
So we get 9% somewhere.
Somewhere that it's probably monitor would be my guess, that when we were pulling the data, it just didn't get added into the former English learner group, but we need to make sure.
We'll check on it.
Because, yeah, because ours is pretty low.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
That's okay. It happens with statistics.
Thank you. Okay, regular attenders, so looking at students who qualify as English learners in those subcategories. The first graph on the left side is all students who are English learners, all grades. The green bar are current English learners, the purple bar are ever English learners, and the red bar are never English learners. So you can see that our attendance rates are lower for any students who have ever received English Language Development Services. And then, if you break it down by grade band, the K-2 graph on the top right there shows that our ever English learners and our current English learners have about the same attendance rate as each other, but still lower than our never English learners. And then, the bottom graph shows sixth grade and ninth grade for those three categories. So from left to right, it's sixth grade current English learners, sixth grade ever English learners, and sixth grade never English learners, and you can see that stair step. And then, the last three bars are for ninth grade. And that is current English learners, ever English learners, and never English learners. And so I think it's interesting that we do have an increase in sixth grade for our students who are ever English learners from when they were in K-2, but then it dips again once they get into ninth grade. And so it's something that we're working on as a team, thinking about how we're really connecting with those students in high school, making sure that they don't become long-term English learners to encourage their engagement in school, among other things. Okay, next slide. Our on-track-to-graduate percentages for students. So our current English learners are 51% on-track-to-graduate, ever English learners 70%, and then never English learners 82%. And just for comparison, for the state data, which I, is that the accurate state, the current state data?
The state, are you going back to the other slide?
No, this one.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. So the current English learners for the state is, has a 72% on-track-to, 70.2% on-track-to-graduate rate. So we're much lower for our current English learners. And then for ever English learners, the state has 79.2% on-track-to-graduate. So we have some room for growth.
Kelly, what's the N-number? How many English learners or ever English learners does this represent?
For us or for the state? Yeah. So that's where I messed up the math on that other slide. So for, since this is on-track-to-graduate, I'm not sure where the number is coming from, from which grade level. We'll find out. We'll have to find out. It should be ninth through 12th, but we'll make sure we know. Yeah, I'm not sure if it's nine through 12th or just ninth. I'm not sure. Okay. And then.
I have a quick clarifying question. I'm assuming that never English learner means that they came to school speaking English?
Or.
Is that right?
Yes, that is.
Or both.
One category of student. A never English learner could also be a student who comes as a simultaneous bilingual, was proficient in English, and didn't require services.
Yes, that's.
I have the answer to Dale's question. So in 23-24, the number of students we had in high school who were EL-identified was 72, okay? And then the number of kids that we had who were monitored, which meant they had previously been in EL but had been exited, was 32.
There should be one more group. The former.
We don't track that on this sheet?
Okay.
This is our staffing sheet? Yeah, perfect.
Okay, four-year graduation rates. We have 71% of students who are current English learners, 86% of students who are former English learners, who exited EL status prior to entering high school. And then, also 86% for our never English learners. So this just really emphasizes the need to get kids exited from EL before they get to high school. And supporting the students who are English learners while they're in high school.
A positive way to say that would be to have them be English proficient by the time they get to high school, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, true.
Okay.
Demonstrate proficiency. Okay. Yes. And then I have this update from the last school year, the 24-25 school year. We have a major celebration. We had 38 students who qualified for the SEAL of Biliteracy or Multiliteracy, which is amazing. And so I just wanted to give you a little bit of information about those students. 55% of the students who earned either SEAL were ever ELS. And so that means that they had qualified for some language development services at some time in school. They may have demonstrated proficiency, or they may have still been current ELS, but they were able to demonstrate proficiency to earn the SEAL of Biliteracy or SEAL of Multiliteracy, which is really amazing. And then, 66% of those students, some of them fall into that other bucket, and some of them are different from those ever EL students, participated in our dual-language program at some point in Oregon City. And so that is something that is definitely worth celebrating as well, because it shows the amount of work that those students do and how much they grow and how much they benefit from being a part of our programming. And so, just really excited to share that with you guys. And some of the things that we have that we're continuing from last year and continuing on into this year, we do have our Spanish course offerings at Oregon City High School that we started last year. We have Spanish Language Arts for ninth and 10th grade, as well as Spanish Global Studies option for students. And that's just expanding our bilingual program, our dual-language immersion program. And we get to continue offering those classes this year. And then, some of the work that we're doing as an English Language Development Department, we have been identified as a district by the state to receive additional support under House Bill 3499. And that means that we are looking very carefully at what our English learners need and what our staff need in order to be able to meet those needs. And so some of the things that we're doing, we're really building our professional development for our English Language Development staff around the adopted curriculum to make sure that they're using it efficiently and effectively. And they're getting special training on how to use assessments that are part of the curriculum and also part of the statewide assessment to inform their instruction in the ELD class, but also in the general education classroom. And so communicating those learnings, those findings, with classroom teachers so that everyone can meet these students' needs. And then, we are launching an academic language toolkit this year that will help teachers in all classes and all content areas support all language learners, whether they are native English speakers needing to learn that high level of academic English, or they're a multilingual learner who's just getting started. It's going to be a toolkit that they can take and use in their content areas. And so I get to work with our administrative staff and our teachers on launching that this year, and so I'm really excited about that. And I think that's about it. What questions do you have for me? And I'm sorry about the numbers, you guys.
Questions from the board?
Are ELD services provided in all of the elementary schools?
Yes.
Right, because it's not just Spanish-specific, it's any student learning any language.
Yes. We have over 50 languages in Oregon City, and so I think it's 56 the last time I checked. And so, yes, any student that comes to us, whatever languages they speak at home, if they show us that they need additional support in English, we provide those services for them.
And then one of the slides showed the attendance, and we know especially younger kids, that depends on the families, so just kind of curious what kind of additional supports are available for families of students that qualify.
Definitely. One of the things that we're working with, we have a partnership with a program called Oregon Kitchen Table. That's part of our House Bill 3499 program. And they have been helping us do a lot of community outreach, connecting with families to see what their experiences in our district, what their needs are, what things that they would like to see, or support that they might need. And then, we're meeting with them throughout this school year to help provide more community engagement opportunities for families, so that way we can make sure that families feel connected and are getting their needs met.
We, one of the things that we heard from students last year, when we were doing listening sessions and focus groups throughout the accreditation and integrated grants process, was that families who come from a culture that's unique, want things to do that is celebrate. was that families who come from a culture that's unique, want things to do that celebrates their culture. And so, that's something that we've been working on. And some of the funds that we get from House Bill 3499 will be put towards having someone organize some more specific Latinx-type events that families can come to, we're hoping quarterly, and just celebrate culture, just like Dia de los Niños and, you know, things like that, but really for the whole community and not just our dual-language schools.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. So, good. Okay. So, next we have our consent agenda. These are routine items the board has reviewed in advance, and we approve together.
Is there a motion?
Sure. Chair Wilson, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Fantastic. Second? Thank you. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Cangjola?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we have one action item tonight, and that is to appoint Chief Financial Officer, Business Manager, Deputy Clerk for the 2025-26 fiscal year.
Did you have anything you want?
Nope. Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure. We're all sitting looking at each other. Could I want to move to approve Resolution 2526-225 to appoint Blaze Riggins as Chief Financial Officer, Business Manager, Deputy Clerk for the 25-26 school year.
I'll second that.
Fantastic. Is there any discussion from the board? We're just excited for Blaze to join us. Ms. Beck, will you please pull the board?
Director Stroh?
Aye.
Director Pitts?
Aye.
Director Cangjola?
Aye.
Director Blackwell?
Aye.
Director White?
Aye.
Director Wilson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. So, that brings us to board member comments. Do we want to start at the end? Dr. Blackwell?
Sure. Talked a little bit about the OSBA summer session. This will be the last time they're actually offering that. They're going to do smaller, more sessions throughout the state. But I always enjoy going and learning and connecting with other board members. So, some things that they celebrated was the $11.36 billion. That was overall. But some of the funding that didn't pass was around the SPED initiative, facilities, Grow Your Own. And not because they didn't have support, but just literally there was no funding available for those. So, some of those initiatives will come back in 2027. Some new policies around education accountability, and then the cell phone will be coming our way. Along with that is the, there's a policy fix put in place for stipends, which is something we had discussed before. The LGBTQ caucus, that vote will be coming in October, November. So, and then the, yeah, I did a session on maintaining strategic plans. And the big thing that I hadn't seen before was monitoring a strategic plan. So, they had a really nice matrix around, I know there's different people that always report on those strategic plans, but they kind of had it spelled out where it explained who was, and the cabinet was responsible for those different. So, that was cool to see. It was nice to spend time with Dr. Crane and Director White. And then, yeah, we met with Clackamas County. They had lots of discussions on bonds. A lot of the districts are trying to pass bonds as well. And then some really serious budget cuts, right, that some of the fellow Clackamas County districts that we didn't face. But heard a lot about what they're dealing with. So, just to get back a little more local, enjoyed First City and National Night Out. And I volunteered to be part of the Back to School that Molly talked about earlier. So, that was a great event last year. And, you know, just that idea of, you know, kicking the school off, the year off right and, you know, helping kids start out and families in the right direction. So, enjoy the last little bit of summer, and then we'll get back to business. Director Stroh?
So, I did also attend First City Celebration and got to talk to lots of our community members, which I was always my favorite talk-talk-talk afternoons to do. And then I did miss National Night Out this year and OSBA Conference. It was my week of vacation, which was much needed. So, I was on vacation, and in doing so, we got our youngest off to college again. And she's all settled at Corvallis, looking to pursue her degree in education. So, I want to thank Holcombe Elementary for all of her mentors that really helped shape her in the last two years and kind of guide her. I know that several reached out, how much they're going to miss her, but maybe she'll be back. And then, again, with Director Blackwell, OC Together will have a table at the Back to School Resource Night, and Sol will be dual at that night as well. And just a reminder to parents that back-to-school sleep schedule should have started last week.
Yep.
This is a huge transition. I mean, even my childcare kids, we're trying to get them back up and get going. It's pretty rough for a couple of weeks. So, let's get that going and get ready to go for that first day back to school.
So, I had the privilege of being in Phoenix, Arizona, with my daughter, her husband, and my two grandsons. I got to go to Back to School Night. I got to go to first day of school, and I got to even drop them off second day of school. And I got to see my daughter manning a table for PTA where she is PTA president. And that was kind of, I felt like that was...
Proud moment?
Yeah. It was a proud moment. Yeah. It was pretty cool to see her participating with her kids. I participated in the Let's Get Back on Schedule, being in bed by 8:00 every night. That was fun for me to just be part of their lives. So, that reminds me that, remember, everyone, as your children and grandchildren go into their first weeks of school, that all the support you can give helping them to be successful is always appreciated and will really make a difference for their teachers and their bus drivers and all the people who spend the day with them. I also went to the OSBA Conference. And a couple of things that stood out to me, we talked about the cell phone ban. I won't go into that anymore. But again, really feel like we need to remember that we're looking at changing a culture. You're right about the addiction. Just, you know, however we as a school board, please staff know that we are, we are behind you, and we hope to make, we will stand with you on this. And I think that we may have to do that. I mean, it's going to be, it's not going to be easy of a whole state of Oregon kids who will, and I don't think we're the only one. They did say that there are 31 other states who have similar, have done similar in the last year. So, we are not alone. So, that'll be interesting to see what happens for all of us. Again, that they did tweak the law that allowed a stipend for school board members. So, I would really like to have that conversation again in the next couple of months, start by workshopping it and then decide how we want to go forward. But we were reminded in the workshop that I went to that part of the reason for doing this was to create the opportunity for people who might not be able to serve on a school board because they need a babysitter, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it's worth talking about. And then finally, I've already let Katie know. I know, you really want to go, don't you? Finally, at the roundtable, you all may remember that two years ago, we had a, we tried to do four quarterly meetings with school board members from all of Clackamas County. And everyone thought it was a great idea. And, but we just were kind of talking around it, and I finally said, I volunteer to organize it. I don't necessarily mean we'll have it in Oregon City, but I will reach out. So, I just wanted you all to know that I'm hoping to have us have four quarterly meetings with other boards this year. So, now I'm done, Mike.
I'm at a loss for words. I too went to First City, and that was fun. Thank my wife and daughter for helping tear down the tents. We always come at the end of the night so we can help. It's a little cooler, but we like cleaning up, and I appreciate them and Jason and Lisa. I'm going to have, I'm going to see you tomorrow at Bargaining. We're going to get back to bargaining with the classified tomorrow. So, Lisa drove the truck and picked everything up. So, that's super cool. But I don't have much. A shout-out to our high school varsity football team and staff. They worked with the youth kids this week as they did assessments. They come out and coached the kids so that the youth coaches can see skills and drills. It's super fantastic because we try to speak the same language from 3rd grade to varsity, even if it's minor. It was a, there was 215 kids times their parents times 60 football kids plus their coaches all around or out on our fields over here. It was just a great time, and we do that every year. So, it's one of the few places that can handle it. It's going to be super cool that, you might hear some complaints, but I heard we're going to start digging out there on August 18th. They, they can adapt and overcome, so they'll have to move to another field. But that's super cool to see all those kids running around and having somewhere to go. And it's not just boys. We have girls on the team and stuff. And I, I think she missed it, but I think cheer's open too, our community ad. But I forgot to ask for that. But super cool. And then also Bargaining's going to start. Look forward to getting back in there and getting this, getting this settled. So, that's all I have.
Ryan, did you have anything to report?
Yeah. I can't believe three weeks away from school starting. It's been a really great summer. Thanks to everybody's help as I've on-boarded. I'm not at town right now, but I have, we're in some nature, and we have some experience with the cell phone ban, so I can bring some of the learnings. So, all the cousins could play together a little bit differently. So, I can bring those back and talk to you all next week when I'm back. But more seriously, thanks for everybody's hard work, the summer program. Everything that you all went through today was really, really outstanding. Really proud of the school desert's hard work over the summers, your prep to welcome our kiddos back to our classrooms. Not many people see all the hard work that you all put in over the summer, but the board and our community really does appreciate all your hard work and effort. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Director Halpern isn't joining us this evening. He also is out in the wilderness at scout camp with his kiddo. But I was also at First City. It was fantastic. It was a great turnout from our community and lots of fun things to see. And now, we're starting to talk about back-to-school. And I just wanted to reiterate what we heard tonight from staff, that there's lots of resources. We know transitioning back-to-school is exciting, and it can be stressful and challenging too. So, we just want to make sure if you have questions or there are, you have specific needs or you know someone with specific needs, please reach out because there are resources to support and make sure that every kiddo starts this fall feeling ready and supported and having everything they need to be successful. And then I, Dr. Switzer has something special to share?
Yes. I just want to say Chair Wilson prompted me on our action item, and I had my functional hat on, and I said, oh, no, we're good. But on the personal side, this is Jason Jensen's last meeting with us, and just want to thank him for his service to our district. Yes. As you know, Jason came in under a lot of pleading and cajoling and stepped into a pretty challenging situation and has done an exceptional job, building transparency, a solid budget, working under your direction for the priorities for our district. And, you know, he's, he's a networker. So, really appreciate the connections he's built across our region on behalf of our district and just thank him. Having Jason in that role with a background in teaching has been really, really nice because he gets it, you know? From the get-go, he's talked about wanting to do good things for kids and wanting to do good things for our community. So, we just wish him well. Thank you for your service to Oregon City.
Thank you, Jason.
You'll be missed.
We're so grateful. Okay. Well, our next meeting is Monday, August 25th. We'll have a hearing and then a regular, a regular session on September 8th.